Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you all here tonight. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like, please feel free to join us. Mr. Hawks, could I ask you to word our prayer, please?
Sure. Let's pray. Father, I thank you for today. I thank you for the opportunity to be here, Lord, and I pray that tonight you will keep your hand over the city and guide it in the decisions that will be made. Father, I thank you for allowing us to live in such a great and wonderful place. We pray all this in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. God, invisible, being just as strong.
Now, I'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Hurd, would you call the roll, please?
Sir, Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Spurgers?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Hawks?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay, and you should have received copy of the September 23rd, 2025 City Council meeting minutes. Any comments, changes, or corrections?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. Before we move, a couple of things. Counsel, before you leave tonight, if you would, and Ms. Hurd and Mr. Finkenbiner, we need to get a group picture up here with the balloons, the Shwana and Felicia's balloons. We've had to walk around them all week, so we're going to get a picture of them.
I thought those were Felicia's birthday balloons.
I thought that was your birthday balloons, too.
And counsel, at this time, I'd like to ask you to suspend the rules briefly. We have a little bit of business I'd like for you guys to take care of.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. Okay, I've asked Chief Harris to come tonight. He is going to ask you to remove a K-9 officer from our inventory and allow the handler to take over the K-9 officer, chief.
Hey, good evening. So, as previously discussed, following the conclusion of the appeal hearing, the department can proceed with removing K-9 Leo from the city's inventory and seek the approval from the council that we can let Leo go live with his former handler.
Motion for approval.
There's a second.
We have a motion, a second to approve removing the K-9 officer from the city's inventory. Any further discussion?
Chief, will you tell us a little bit about how Leo has been cared for?
Yeah, so, he's in his kennel, it has a door that go in and out, so you have an outside portion of it and then an inside portion where it is air conditioning, you know, 24/7. There was, when we took over Leo and everything, he had some dental, needed some dental work, so we sent him to the vet to get a tooth extracted that had gotten infected and bad. I also had them send Leo, take Leo just to get a physical. He's an older dog and everything, so they said he doesn't have any major problems other than an older dog. And so, he had, when he went to get physical, they had a little, dogs get, it's very common in dogs, my neighbor actually, his dog has one, they get a little, I don't know if it's a cyst above their tail and everything, so we took him over there and had that taken care of and everything. He goes back at 8:30 in the morning to just do a little follow-up, so.
And for anyone that is curious on this, I made an unannounced visit by the police department and asked to check on Leo today. And Leo is happily smiling in this photo. You're welcome to come see me afterwards. I went and saw outside in the kennel, it's very clean, obviously has access to air. When inside kennel, you could not even tell that it all could have been in there, and again, my visit was unannounced, so I feel that that's probably pretty standard. And I will say, he looks real happy until you get close.
How close did you get?
Close enough to feel the full wrath of Leo.
So, we've got a motion to say, Angie, it's okay if I, the plan tomorrow is Leo will go to the vet for a checkup, and then we'll give you guys the papers to relieve the city of any liability, and then Leo will be given to Ms. Burke. Does that work? Thank you, Angie.
And I would like to say thank you to Officer Leo for his service as well.
Yes.
Hey, counsel, any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Angie. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Mr. Hawkins, you're up, sir.
Um, let's see.
Economic development.
Actually, economic development.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you come first?
You're right.
You want to come up and talk about this? Mr. Mayor, I'm stepping all over you.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
No, no, no.
Brett, come on up. I looked a line ahead, Andy. It's my fault.
All right.
Hello, Mr. Carroll.
Hello. Brett Carroll, Conway Corp. Appreciate the council mayor allowing us to make this recommendation for a unique opportunity related to some timber around the lake. We've been working with Native State, a local Conway company, for about a year, and when I say "we've been working with them," I really mean Mark Ferguson back there in the green shirt. Mark's been doing all the heavy lifting on this project and doing the analysis and studying, but we have a unique opportunity to do a couple of things, be, you know, good environmental stewards of the forests that we have around the lake and in terms of allowing Native State to calculate the carbon credits and self owes to big companies, and so that's kind of what their business model looks like. But anyway, I think we're at a time to make this recommendation, and the actual title to the land is in the name of the city of Conway, so that's why Native State was starting like the mayor to execute the agreement, assuming that, you know, once Mr. Finkenbiner has an opportunity to review it and gets comfortable with the terms and conditions. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Andy Cameron with Native State, and he's going to talk a little bit about the project. I'll just, and I'll stay here in case y'all have more questions for me.
Thank you, Brett. Good evening. Again, I'm Andy Cameron with Native State, here, a Conway-based company. We're a forest carbon development company, and, yeah, we've been working with Conway Corp about this potential that exists in this property here around the lake. Forest carbon development, real quick, for those of you who don't know the short story, I mean, we develop carbon credits from trees and by enrolling landowners, building projects, and we sell those to Fortune 500 companies all over the world. And so, recognizing this opportunity, not only in the trees, if you can look around that lake, there's also a lot of pasture ground, open ground, there's a lot of carbon potential there as well. I think we are looking at, first glance, there may be 150 to 200 acres that potentially we may plant trees in and do what we call afforestation and create another type of carbon credit there. And so, it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of potential, it's a great story, there's watershed protection, there's habitats, there's carbon credits. When we see a project like this that has that kind of potential, we get pretty excited about it, and we think it's a great, for all three entities that potentially are involved in this agreement, from Conway Corp to Native State to the city of Conway, we think there's a wonderful story to tell there, and there's also a chance to create carbon revenue there as well. And so, we're very excited about it and appreciate, you know, any consideration given. Again, we have an agreement, I believe, in.
Mr. Finkbiner?
Mr. Finkbiner. Yeah. And, so, yeah, I think, again, do you have any questions about what we do and how this works?
For the folks that are watching at home, could you explain what carbon credits are, please, sir?
Okay, so, a carbon credit, for those of y'all, I mean, climate change, carbon neutral, some of these phrases you've probably heard a lot of over the last decade or so. If a company is emitting carbon into the atmosphere, they can do it through their smoke stacks, out their jet engine exhaust, that emission is measured in tons of carbon, okay, that is emitted into the atmosphere. What a carbon credit is, is one ton, the same equivalent metric ton of carbon stored in a tree. So, as a tree grows, it puts on weight, and it puts on a weight of carbon. So, what we're able to do with our science and our forestry, a company like Native State, is actually sign up a landowner, have that landowner change the way they manage their property, the way they manage their trees, and we can prove the, what we call the additionality of carbon, okay? And it's the same thing, if a metric ton goes into the atmosphere, it can be offset with a, or with a carbon credit that is one ton stored or sequestered in that natural system, okay? So, a ton, a carbon credit is the equivalent of one ton, one metric ton, excuse me, of carbon sequestered. And so, companies all around the world, thousands of companies around the world have made pledges towards carbon neutrality by 2030, by 2040, by 2050, buying these types of credits from a company like Native State is one way they can achieve those goals.
So, you're giving them a conduit to achieve their corporate social responsibility promises, essentially?
Yeah. I mean, there's other ways to do it other than this, and they do, I mean, they can come up with technology to reduce the emissions out of that engine or smokestack. There's, we're not the, I mean, there's add carbon, there's all kinds of carbon. We are a forest carbon developer and a very rapidly growing one. We have 60-something employees now in our short little four years, 11 registered foresters, biometricians, and wildlife biologists on our payroll. So, it's pretty high science and it's pretty, it's pretty exciting industry, and this is an exciting opportunity, I think, so.
We would love to see you continue to grow that business in Conway.
Thank you.
How long does it take a pine tree, if it's planted that tall, to grow big enough to make an impact on what you're talking about?
One pine tree? Okay, so, that's a good question. When we plant a tree, if we went into a pasture and planted a tree, we can't count it for carbon until it has reached one inch diameter, four feet off the ground, called DBH. And in existing trees, we can't count them until they're five inches in diameter before we can claim or count that tonnage of carbon.
How much would a old pine tree hold? How much tonnage? Idea?
I need a forester right now.
I'll see a lumberjack.
I mean, I mean, it's a 20-year-old, was that your question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I know.
I'm thinking diameters, I'm sorry. I'm calculating diameters right now. But I mean, if, probably a couple of three, because if you weigh that pine tree, we got to take out the water, we got to take out everything and get it down to the weight of carbon. Water don't count in the tons, right? We have to remove, calculate, and scientifically remove the weight of everything that's in that piece of wood that is not carbon. There's a lot of, most 30-ish percent of the tree weight is carbon. Water is your overwhelming, you got to take the water out, you got to take all the things out, and you're left with carbon, so.
Hey, like you're doing good stuff.
I thought I was too old to learn something. Who knew?
I picked up on the part where he said, trees pick up carbon so it gain weight, so I think that's probably my problem.
I was going to talk to you about that.
But it is, and for your information, it is on the, what we call the IFM, or the existing forest part of this property, our agreements are 40-year obligations. If we go forward with a tree planting contract, those are 60-year obligations. The people that buy these credits from us, the Fortune 500s, the large companies in this world, they want to see long-term stability and permanence in what we're doing. These are, and these are non-negotiable terms in terms of the length of contract. IFM is 40 years, tree planting is 60 years.
Well, and this aligns with Conway Corporation's whole philosophy of protecting that water, you know, for use, but, so, it's not like it's a...
Yeah, and if we, and I know...
It goes against what you guys are trying to do.
If there's hay being cut on one of these properties and we turn that into forest, it is creating what we call a tremendous additionality story for carbon, as an example, right? So, and that's what we do, that's what we do at Native State, is we prove, scientifically prove that that is happening, that that change is happening, and it's quantifiable, and it's also marketable now because of these corporations wanting to do what they're doing, right?
They don't.
That didn't exist, I mean, 10 years ago, who would have thought, right? But it does exist now, and it exists in a very...
Very interesting.
Very big way.
So, we don't have a resolution here, just looking for us to approve entering into the agreement here? Yes?
Right.
All right, then.
I'm sorry, one other question. So, I'm assuming on the most simplistic level, what this means is for 40 years, the trees can't be cut down?
We have two options in our program. One is deferred harvest, where for 40 years you forego commercial harvest, and then select cut, where if you choose, you could, you could go in and do a commercial harvest. We just, we calculate and tell you how many tons you can take off there and still be carbon. There are times trees need to be cut for the overall health of the forest, like, we may need, we may have an invasive privet or some kind of bad trees around there that we don't want. Those need to go out for the overall health of the forest, and so, we're all, our foresters will write, if you enter this agreement with us, a professional forester will write, will sit down with you and write a plan based on the trees that are on that property. We inventory every acre of that property for all of our landowners.
Who's responsible for clearing the trees if the plan is subject to clearing trees at that juncture?
The owner.
Okay, so, it'd come back to us, and you'd say, for us to continue to get the best carbon credit?
Yeah, we wouldn't cut any. We make recommendations, we write management plans, we may recommend a control burn on a portion of it, doesn't mean you have to do it, but it would certainly be, our forester may recommend that this section up here needs some type of improvement.
But it wouldn't, nothing would bind us to doing that either.
Okay.
Do this in just Arkansas? How many states?
We have signed landowners in 12 states as of right now. The south is where trees grow the fastest and oddly enough, the south is where people cut down trees the most aggressively. And so we need both of those for our program to work. Trees aren't being cut down, we're not making a change, we're not changing a behavior.
Sure.
Right? You go to parts of the country where they're not cutting trees down, we can't make our case for change, our case for additionality, so, in our world. So, the south, excuse me, the south, as it turns out, is the best place to do what we do. We have over 500,000 net forested acres in our, enrolled in our program today in twelve states.
Thank you.
Well, I would make a motion to approve entering into the agreement with Native State.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve this agreement with Nav State LLC for Conway Corporation. Any further discussion?
Do we need to make that contingent upon the review and approval of the city attorney?
I reviewed the agreement.
Okay, all right.
You're good, Charles.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, great.
No further discussion, Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
I do.
And Mr. Carroll, thank you as always for stewarding the city's resources well and looking for opportunities for us to be smart about taking care of our right payers, but also take care of the environment.
Those guys found the opportunity and so, anyway.
Thanks, Mark, Brett, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a resolution approving the tax exempt bond reimbursement for Conway Corporation, for Conway Corporation for telecommunications project. I have Mr. Carroll and Mr. Wilburn, or Carroll, Brett, you gonna handle it?
Yeah, I am. Yeah, Mr. Wilburn had a conflict, he's in fable tonight. You might remember, I think August the 26th or August 28th, we had a similar reimbursement resolution for some electric expenditures that were making related to the construction of a natural gas plant. And this is very similar, this is except for telecommunications. We have got a, a pretty, a lot of things going on in Conway, as you guys well know, and there's some competitive pressures, so we need to make some utility telecommunications, infrastructure improvements, and we're gonna need to borrow some money to do that. And so this allows us to spend some of our own cash until we get the bonds issued and then we can reimburse ourselves out of those bonds. So that's what, that's what this reimbursement resolution's all about.
Council, any questions?
For adoption of the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for Conway Corporation. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
This is Resolution R. 2537, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Now, Mr. Hawkins, I'm trying to get in front of you. You're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Brett, appreciate you.
First item here, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to, I'm sorry, consideration to waive the three readings for the ordinances on tonight's city council agenda. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ordinances that will be read this evening, and I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve considering waiving all three readings for the ordinances on the October 14th city council agenda. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero, Ms. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds received from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Department. And there's Shawana.
Good evening, council, how are you all today?
Good, how are you?
Doing pretty good, I'm pretty excited about this, despite the government shutdown. We have received our federal funding and our funding agreement has been, our grant agreement has been approved as well, so we are able to proceed with our sub-recipient funding. And as you can see, we do have two new sub-recipients. We've kind of talked about starting or to embrace new services that we look at within the city. We have CAR-TI to help low to moderate income individuals with their healthcare, and we also have the Dream Foundation, which will help high schoolers or seniors with scholarships as well. So those are two new sub-recipients. We have a total of seven this year, so we're taking on a little bit more, but we feel like all of them have been worth it, so we're willing to take on the extra work for that. So in addition to that, you will see Airport Park. We are looking to do some, some upgrades over there by replacing like the playground equipment as well as the baseball field, looking at that. In the future, we're looking to put hopefully a bathroom and a pavilion out there as well just to give it a facelift for that area, so we stand before you tonight to see if we can appropriate our funding.
Questions?
Motion for the adoption of the ordinance, Ms. Hurd, I have it as O. 2576. Seventy-six. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the appropriation of HUD funds for program year 2025 for the CDBG block grant department. Any further discussion?
What's the long range on federal government programs like this?
We're good because we have received it already. I will say with the changes that we've had in the administration, with this current administration, some of our processes have been a little bit slower than they normally would be with the reduction in staff, but we've been able to navigate it really well. We were able to put in our information on time to get our approvals on time, but it can range based off of, I mean, with the government shutdown right now, we wouldn't have.
I think my question is more long-term than just the government reopening. I think it's probably looking into '26 and '27. Do you think these funds will still be available to us?
I will say, I'm gonna say hopefully yes, and I say that because even this year, there was this big thing to cut funding, but our National Community Development Association, we have advocates that are there for us fighting for CDBG funding, and they came back and funded all of CDBG, they funded all of Home, so other programs they reduced or cut, however, they had some other programs that came out. So I will say with NCDAs and the relationships that they have with the individuals on the hill, it's been very successful at ensuring that we have funding that continues.
Thank you very much.
And I will be back to see you all in the spring, just to kind of give you an idea of some programs or to give you more information on some programs that we have coming with the rehab as well as the small business grants.
Thank you for what you do, taking care of this stuff.
Enjoy what I do, thank y'all for letting me do it. Have a great.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Thank you, Shawana. Ms. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an accounting ordinance. There's been a $500 donation from First Security Bank. It's been received for the Conway Tree Board, and Ms. Tucker, what would you like to tell us about this?
Well, you said pretty much all of it. First Security Bank was good enough to give us $500 for the tree board, and I need to appropriate that into their account so they can spend it.
The ordinance O. 77.
I would make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance and thank First Security.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance to appropriate donation funds for the tree board. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
And that passes eight to zero, Ms. Hawkins.
Final item here, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating insurance fund for the Planning and Development Department, and since you're still there, I guess you're gonna.
It's all me.
You're gonna tell us about it, and I love those glasses.
Thank you.
If you'll watch here when she gets through, Mr. Hawkins, if you'll watch when she gets through here, she's gonna click her heels together and she's gonna go home.
Transport myself home.
No, I think.
Bart lives to make fun of my shoes.
And I think if I know you, you'd be clicking those heels and arriving at the beach.
Well, more than likely, yes, if I had that power, that's exactly what I'd do.
And I, and I went to school together, we can do this.
He's older than me. I mean, I'm just saying, he's. Okay, we had $4,847.15 written to us to pay for some damage that was the planning car sustained back in May, and this is the first part of it for the repairs, so we're just asking that we'd be able to appropriate that.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance appropriating insurance funds for the planning department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mel?
Aye.
Jones?
Yes.
Hawks?
Yes.
Spurgers?
Aye.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Thank you, Ann.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm gonna make one little plug for the tree board while I'm up here, but Arbor Day is November the first, and they're gonna have a big to-do out at Laurel Park and have food and tree giveaways and all that kind of stuff, so citizens of Conway, come get a tree.
Thank you.
That feels like the right time to also mention that there's opening for boards and commissions, and so if you're interested in getting involved with city government, now's the time to go to the website or to Facebook and you can see what's out there and available. And also a big thank you to the people that serve on our tree board and to planning for rolling that into all the things that you guys take care of because it does make an impact, so thank you.
If you want to make a difference in your community, get on one of those boards. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Spurgers. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Someone mentioned yesterday at our Advertising and Promotions Commission meeting about e-waste. Does anybody know anything about e-waste and what date that might be?
Friday and Saturday.
It's this Friday, it's this Friday and Saturday.
It was the guy from the expo that was here from Parks and Rec that mentioned, yes, that they were having e-waste.
Yeah, we'll get something on our website.
I think it would be a good idea to have that.
Bobby's kids are out of school, so he's, he's been spending time with them, we'll get, we'll get something out there.
Right.
Oh, it's on there now, Felicia. Okay, all right, thank you. Next, we have the Public Service Committee, and first up, we have an ordinance to accept and approve appropriation of grant funds for the Conway Animal Services. We have Mr. Clausen and Mr. Mitchell here. See Mr. Clausen? How was your trip, Spencer?
It was fantastic.
Good.
It was fantastic. Fourteen days is a little long to be gone, though. I started wanting to be home, so.
That's a lot of family time.
It's a lot of family time.
Are you caught up with Survivor yet?
I am caught up on Survivor. Yeah.
I just didn't want to miss.
First things first.
Didn't want to miss anything.
Yeah. So we're here today, the, the grant we received, $20,000 for a community cat program, this is the second draw of $4,000 for that, so I'm asking that we can appropriate the funds from grant revenues account and put it in our miscellaneous account so we can continue the, this program.
How's that coming along?
Less cats, I guess, healthier cats, I think it's doing well. So it's, it's a fantastic alternative to what, what our only choices were in the past. So I think it's been very successful. As we've worked with people in the community, we've had good feedback. They've been really, really thrilled that this is the direction we're headed.
It's, it's heard great things about it, you're doing a great job out there, you and your people.
They, they are fantastic, and I've got a plug for them. They went to Bentonville this weekend, or this past weekend, and got fourteen dogs adopted out. That's a long way to go, but it was successful, and here recently, we have received about $7,000 in just public donations. People really love what they're doing out there, and it's starting to, it's starting to show through donations and, and volunteerism and some other things, so they're doing a tremendous job.
Like, the best thing to vote for is taking free money for you guys to do more work there, so.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, happily make a motion here.
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance to accept the appropriation of grant funds for the Conway Animal Services. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
2579, Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
He had a phone call.
Had to take a call, yes. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Thank you, Spencer.
All right, thank y'all, have a good one.
Next up, we have an ordinance to approve the agreement with Burton Pools and Spa for the Community Center. Ms. Bryce will be here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is just requesting your approval for Burton Pools and Spa. I know there's a lot of chlorine vendors out there, however, the chemical feeders that we have require Pulsar chemical, and Burton Pools and Spa is the most efficient and the closest vendor that we can get that from.
And local.
Yes. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
It's good to do business local. So will they be doing the maintenance on the equipment too, or is it just chlorine they're providing?
So this is for chemicals, they also will, they are helping us some with the maintenance just because that's why Rotelo, NAPOL, and the, the people that provided the equipment recommended, and so they are walking us through that, they, they visit every Thursday right now. And when our staff is fully staffed and fully trained, we will be able to do all of that ourselves. Right now, we are doing most of that ourselves, but they do check in with us once a week.
I talked to somebody from NAPOL, and they told me, you know, that we need to really make sure that whoever took care of that did it right.
Yes, we are trying our best and we are also relying on Burton Pools and Spa to help get us there too. I don't know if you've been in that pump house, but it is very massive.
It's pretty, yeah, it's a lot.
If y'all have not been, any of council members or anybody out here, if y'all have not been out and let Jamie take you through that thing, I had not been through it until just recently, what, two weeks ago maybe? And it's, it's amazing.
I will be glad to give you all a tour anytime, just let me know.
Jamie, no, no concern about Burton here, just curious, is there a reason we're not going through the process to give other local vendors an opportunity to bid on this?
Burton really is the only local vendor for Pulsar. We did have some different feeders that were there, and we were using Accutab, which is more readily available. However, it was not keeping up. There was a lot of manual labor that we had to do from July to September, and then finally the equipment manufacturer came in and said, this is not gonna work. You have got to have these other feeders, and we actually ran bigger lines, and once we did that, it was much easier to, to keep up with that.
Right, so I think what I heard you say is that they're the only local vendor for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I would, I would not be in favor of going with the big local company just because it was convenient if we had others able to satisfy this need, but if they are the only local one that can and we're not pushing a small business out of the way.
Right, it, it's very, it's all about those feeders, and Pulsar is the only chemical that we can use, and those feeders or the warranty will be voided, and so that's why we're going this route.
Take care of that.
Thank you.
Council, back to you.
Who for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
With emergency clause, Mr.?
And the emergency clause, absolutely.
Good to second in that as well, Ms. Isby, the emergency clause.
Yes, I am.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
He had, he had a family emergency.[1639.68]
Hawks? Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
And the emergency clause, Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Those both pass seven to zero. Next up? Thank you, Jamie. Next up, we have an ordinance to approve appropriation of funds for the replacement of air conditioning units for the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Thames.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Andrew.
So we're just looking to appropriate funds from the Advertising and Promotion account in the amount of $72,200 to replace some of our AC units that are just beyond repairs at this point. Some of them are over 20 years old. And to cool some of these larger buildings, they just, they run constantly. So we're looking to replace these.
And just for the public more than anything else, because there was a question about this, capital purchases for recreation are allowed from the A&amp;P Fund, and those are the funds that come directly to the city. So this is just a budget transfer from that fund to your maintenance account where you'll spend it and replace these.
Correct.
And this is the city's portion of the A&amp;P tax?
Correct, yes. This isn't new funds. This is just...
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mel, for pointing that out. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Mel.
With that, I will make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second.
And there's an emergency clause.
It's the emergency clause.
I do not see that.
My second is as well.
I see it now. We have a motion and a second to approve the appropriation of funds for replacements of air conditioning units for the Parks Recreation Department. The emergency clause, any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Yes.
Those both pass seven to zero. Thank you, Andrew. Next up, we have our Public Safety Committee, and we have an ordinance to approve personnel reclassification of the Conway Emergency Operations Center. Mr. Kennedy, the Director of EOC, will be up to speak. Hey, Sean.
Good evening, Counsel. Mayor. So tonight, I'm coming to you with a request to reclassify an open telecommunicated position. I briefly mentioned it a few weeks ago at our special council meeting. So this position is going to be a specialized position that's gonna primarily focus on our radio system and the programming of the radios that go with our radio system. But one of the benefits is it will also allow me to have someone in-house that can also react to our everyday issues that we run into on the floor, whether it be a headset or a keyboard, something that someone's right there that can take care of it. So again, they're gonna primarily focus on the radio system and its subscriber units and radios, especially as we go through this upgrade that we're just started. I don't think I'm gonna be able to, I wanna take my time with the hiring process on this one because it is specialized. So I don't foresee me hiring this position until the beginning of next year unless by some miraculous intervention, someone with just the right skills comes to me quick enough. So if we were to do it, it would be late, late in the year, near the end of the year.
Counsel?
This is taking a, our 29th telecommunicated position, that odd number, and just taking that last position and reclassifying it to this.
Counsel, any questions?
I would make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm gonna be voting against it because I'm not gonna vote for any more personnel increases in next year's budget until we get the firefighters up to where they need to be.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
I appreciate the job y'all are doing up there.
Thanks, sir.
Sure. Any other comments, questions? Counsel, back to you.
I have a motion again here.
Second.
I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance.
I don't think we have the second.
Oh, did we not get it?
I just did it.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I got one. Yeah. Ordinance to approve the personnel reclassification of the Conway Emergency Operations Center. Any further discussion?
O. 2582. Mr. Ledbetter?
No.
Grimes?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
That passes five to one.
Thank you, Counsel.
I'm sorry. Six to one. Six to one, my bad.
Six.
And last, we have our annual millage recertification, our certification as required of the city to submit to the Fulton County Clerk's Office. Now, for folks watching at home and in the, in the audience here, these are not new taxes. These are taxes that have been on the books, some of them since the 60s. This is your tax, Mr. Hellsinger, for your pensions, mine and Mr. Ledbetter's. So, so we need to keep those. I'm too old to go back to work anywhere else. First is the resolution of a voluntary levy of two tenths, point two of a mill on, of a dollar be made up on the assessed valuation of all taxable real estate and personal property tax for an animal shelter for the City of Conway.
What's that resolution number?
Thirty-eight, I believe.
Okay, just a second, we'll get that before we're talking.
It's thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight on that one. Okay. Subsequent ones will be...
And this is again voluntary?
Yes, it's, they've been on the books for quite some time. It's just what we have to have run, city.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance for the animals.
I'm sorry, resolution. Resolution. Thank you, Sheila. I heard it.
Did I say ordinance?
I said...
You were just repeating what he said.
Yeah, it's my fault.
My hearing aids are working really good. I'm picking up everything.
Yeah, I don't have an excuse.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution, voluntary tax of two tenths on a mill for the animal shelter. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's seven to zero. Next is a resolution of voluntary levy of four tenths on the dollar be made up on the assessed valuation of all taxable real estate and personal property tax for the recreation assessment, raising special revenue for the sole and exclusive purpose, providing additional funds for the purpose of construction, equipment, and maintaining the public recreation and playgrounds of the City of Conway. Make a motion for adoption of this resolution?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution of a voluntary levy for public recreation and playgrounds for the City of Conway. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's seven to zero. Next is a resolution of voluntary levy of four tenths on the dollar be made up on the assessed valuation of all taxable real estate and personal property tax for raising special revenue for the exclusive purpose of operating and maintaining cemeteries for the City of Conway.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution, R. 2540.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution of voluntary of four tenths for cemeteries for the City of Conway. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's seven to zero. Next up is a resolution, four tenths on the dollar be made up on the assessed valuation of all taxable real estate and personal property tax for raising special revenue for the pension relief fund, for the policeman's fund. Are you, we good with that one? I'm right there, I'm right there with you. I'm right there with you. Counsel?
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution, R. 2541.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for four tenths of a mill for police pension fund. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.